You are watching Access La Porte County Channel ninety seven. Coming up next is the September eighteenth, twenty twenty three meeting of La Porte County Council's Budget Workshop. You can find more information for this workshop by visiting www dot access la port county dot org.
Welcome to the continuation of the budget workshop. It is Monday, September eighteenth. We're starting at five thirty seven, a few minutes late. We see Randy is online and we are expecting Mark to join us shortly. There, we left, um, we left the council meeting, I mean, the last set of workshops with several things to go and discuss. There were a few departments that we needed to finalize and review. And then we also have salaries to take into consideration. We are looking to try and adopt the budget by the end of October. And then if there's any modifications to the budget, then we'll continue some additional workshops. We will also have a hearing, but right now, um, gentlemen, I know that we're not going to be able to complete this tonight. So, uh, we had originally scheduled October second to be for our hearing. And I'd like to change that to the workshop if you agree.
I agree.
Earl, does that work for you if we change that? Uh, Randy, does that work for you as well if we change the October second to workshop? Thank you.
That would be prior to our regular meeting?
Prior to our regular meeting, we'll try and start at five thirty so that it'll give us a little bit of time.
So it wouldn't be, it won't be a workshop, it'll be a continuation?
A continuation, yes, it's a continuation, yes, thank you, sir. Uh, then afterwards, if we have successful, we'll be able to have our rate, um, uh, set at that time. I believe we have to have it set really quickly in October, um, or immediately after the hearing.
At the end of the next meeting, we should be able to have a pretty good idea of what we want the budget to look like. Then Rhonda in the auditor's office can, uh, post notice of that ten days before a hearing is held.
Okay, so it'll be, it'll be done at the hearing.
Hopefully.
And, okay. And then there'll have to be a separate meeting for the hearing because that'll be in between our meetings. So that we can adopt, have the second, I believe, second hearing at our meeting and then adopt at our meet regularly scheduled meeting on October twenty third. We have here in front of us right now, just to start off real quick, we have in front of us prosecutors. There was a change in the prosecutor's budget. We found that, uh, I thought we had approved it with that, but I'm just double checking. Yeah, I've got it. I'm just looking to see, I have comments here, but I, I, I have that it was, uh, for the two hundred and three hundred and thirty accounts were approved. And that we're looking, the only change here is to move somebody to be paid out of public safety lit. So virtually there's no action required from us tonight on that. So that takes care of those papers that are in front of us. I do not believe we have, um, so we also learned that, um, the health, health department, uh, in order for us to get the grant, we have to give them a three-year average of what the last three years of, uh, budget has been, and it is actually less, and so we need to correct that. Uh, we will work on having those numbers ready for the next meeting. Also, we have a rough idea of the, um, health department is receiving a grant from the state. And we have the amount, it's formally will be official in the middle of October. And, uh, but we also have to set that up as a budgetary item so that we don't have to appropriate every dollar. So that also is, uh, some others that we have to do. I'm going to ask the auditor or his deputy, there were, uh, I believe, there were three departments besides, there was the commissioners, um, which I believe, oh, we had some issues and I know they've worked on it, but I don't believe it is ready just yet unless you've received it. Last I heard this afternoon, it was not ready. And I don't know, I don't remember what the others were, so if you could enlighten us if you recall, please.
I'll put the email on my phone if no one has it.
It's the notice. One of the things that she's looking for that, one of the things that you asked for was the, uh, the, um, the amounts that, um, each one percent increase would, uh,
Taking that now.
Oh, yeah, okay, that, okay.
I appreciate, but,
Okay, please.
We got other things we need to, I appreciate, I appreciate you offering that information. I just wanted to make sure I said that.
It is the twenty twenty four. It's not a packet.
I also would like to make mention that Baker Tilly has been brought in to assist in the budgeting process. Um, it's to help us make sure that the, what, what we're doing because the process is very complex. And where you think there's a line item of, of columns of all the different types of income. And then there's allocation that goes to all of the different departments for special things. And then we still have to find out in the general fund what we have available to pay for. So they have been brought in to help us fully understand it. We had a meeting on Friday and I believe, uh, is Jason still on?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Jason, if you would be so kind as to, um, share with the other council members, uh, just a, a, a quick synopsis of, uh, what we spoke about on Monday. And just to let everybody know, um, we were only working on the general fund at the time, but we found it's important to also look at other funds and we, we just got a list earlier, late this afternoon, uh, from one of the other people working on it. And we have to, we concur that those items need to be looked at. Jason, please.
Uh, thank you, thank you, members of the council. Uh, my name is, uh, Jason Simler and I'm a partner with, uh, Baker Tilly. And, uh, worked with a number of you in the past on some other financings of the county. And as was mentioned, we were asked to assist you with the, the budgeting, uh, process, uh, this year. And we put together, uh, this kind of summary of the general fund and a kind of history of the last three years of revenue received and expenses and then also projected, uh, what we thought might look at for two thousand twenty-three, uh, assuming you spend all your budget and then also looking at two thousand twenty-four, uh, based on some estimates of revenues. And then also looking at the budget for two thousand twenty-four. And through that process, we had a, a couple of questions that, uh, we discussed on Friday that we wanted to try and get some more clarification on. And I think one of those being, uh, it sounds like what occurred in when the budget was prepared in two thousand twenty-two at that time, the council had not decided on the amount of raises, uh, to be given at that time. So we're looking at, uh, not only incorporating the two thousand twenty-three budget, but the additional amount of expenses that's, well, uh, that you are incurring and will incur the rest of this year to try to get a better idea of what the ending balance of two thousand twenty-three, uh, will be.
Thank you. And just to let everybody know, there's a, another meeting scheduled, um, a week from this Friday, I believe, uh, which would be the twenty-ninth. And, um, that's, so that's the follow-up. It's the additional time needed. They're, uh, they are at conferences and then, uh, quite a few of us are also at the conference. Not this week, the, starting, uh, next week. So the AIC conference that is.
We're gonna meet on Friday, can we meet at five instead of five thirty or six?
He's referring to the meeting you just mentioned with Baker Tilly.
The meeting with Baker Tilly. We'll try and arrange that. Thank you. So that we can have a, a third person there, but we, because of, uh, yeah. Well, we'll try and arrange that. We'll talk with, uh, we'll talk with Jason and his team, okay?
I think it'd be a good idea to have a meeting with the entire council in Baker Tilly so that everybody can ask questions as we're going through this process and,
Appreciate that.
That'll have to be noticed.
Yes.
And, yeah.
Mr. Di Martino, remind me how many members need to be present in person in order to hold that meeting?
For the meet, if you're gonna meet with them, it's just gonna be a workshop, it'll have to be open.
Yeah, how many members would need to be present in, in person in order for that meeting to be done partially virtually? Or would we all be here and does everyone attend to the workshop?
I mean, you could, you could, you'd leave a maj- majority of the council in person and the rest can attend virtually.
Thank you.
But you're, but you're not only going to be accepting information, you're really not going to be making any decisions, so.
Correct. Okay. We'll work on trying to set that up and we'll make sure that it's convenient for as many po- people as possible, uh, as well. Do you have that list now? Thank you.
Are you referring to the list that I sent of what I noticed the changes were?
Uh, I, there was a list of three departments that you had said that we needed to. I thought that's what was in that email. I could be mistaken because it's been many emails ago. So.
The email that I sent out, uh, I don't know if I mentioned just three, but I sent a list going through my entire book. So the first one was building maintenance is the first one that I saw changes on, um.
All we did was agree to use the prior year's budget. That's what we agreed upon, so that's, there should be,
But that's my point is, I sent, the reason I included them was because I received information afterwards. So that's, that's what I included on my email.
When, when we say we're keeping the commissioner's budget the same, does that mean that it is still going to be missing certain amounts of money for, uh, insurance-related payments?
We didn't say we were keeping the commissioners the same.
Yes, you did, actually. Right now, we're talking about building maintenance, but you did say that about commissioners during that budget as well. So yes, to that answer.
We're close to having the commissioner's budget, I think, worked out.
Right, he was just saying, what he said last meeting was that they're keeping it the same as twenty twenty-three at that time. But, um, did you have a question on building maintenance, councilman?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Next, please.
So I had said no changes to that, no changes to that. MS four, did you need to talk about that one tonight or nothing has changed? Oh, it did lower in the pay.
Well, MS four, we didn't have the accurate pay going into this year under the original plan. But it has changed, the commissioners have changed on how they plan to, uh, see that group run. So I'm just trying to take,
So that group submitted a,
MS four is the second white tab if anybody's trying to find it.
In addition to that, I spoke with Chris Havens last week. The professional services account, it was severely, uh, underfunded last year. And it appears that he's not only gonna, Chris will have to come to us for an additional preparation, to not only cover how it was, that account was initially overspent, but also some known incoming invoices that are gonna take it above and beyond the nineteen thousand spent so far. So that number for fifteen thousand, it's on a, a rough budget, we're gonna have to reconsider it some number north of fifteen thousand.
When Mr. Haven said that it was overspent, um, for, uh, professional services, was there money in personal services salary wages that could be transferred to that that would make it whole or are there,
That's part of,
additional appropriation from somewhere else?
Rhonda, if I recall correctly, Chris was in contact with you in your office about, uh, where they can move some money around in order to take those negative balances to zero.
Absolutely.
And, and those were taken out of some of those personal services account, those salary accounts or some, where else do they answer that?
Yes.
That was already done, but the incoming, um, invoices are gonna take us above and beyond.
Okay. So they're gonna need to come for funding?
Yes.
Okay.
It, it just comes down to how MS four is managed the first half of the year.
Okay. Um, the next one, please.
The next one on the list was the, the ones, the next one with the change happened to be the recorder, uh, and the recorders' record perpetuation fund. And the reason for those changes on this paperwork were only to, um, represent what the council requested when they were here for their budget. So it would just show what the changes were from your requests.
They're the second red if anybody's interested.
Rhonda, I got an updated treasures in my packet too, was there a change to that?
Um, yes, we haven't gotten to that one, but yes, there was.
Oh, well, okay, I thought we were going in order, nevermind.
We are, we're on the recorder right now.
My treasure is before the recorder.
Oh, my apologies, maybe it's missing from this list. Thank you. I don't have it on this list perhaps. The answer is yes. Um, the treasurer's office thought that it, they did not need to turn in their steps until January. So what you'll see on this update is their steps so that that can be taken into account when we do the complete budget.
Thank you. So is twenty twenty-four budget numbers for treasurer, current salaries plus steps?
It will be what steps they will hit in twenty twenty-four, yes. Thank you, Councilman Novak. Oh, I see, yeah, thank you.
Next one, please.
So the next one is the recorders. Were there any questions on the recorders or?
I thought we'd asked them, do you actually take more out of the perpetuation fund? If I was correct.
Um, it was just one salary that was asked.
Yes, because they can, they're restricted also on what salaries it can be from.
Yeah, but that's what you'll see on this change, yes.
Thank you.
Coroner, the reason that I wrote down the coroner's was, um, after we did all of this, I gave the Form one forty-four's to the payroll department so that they could go through and let us know if all of these amounts were correct. And we noticed a difference in the first deputy's salary. So when I asked the, uh, coroner about it, she commented that this new amount is what she would like to increase it to. So to give a pay increase to the first deputy. So I just wanted to make sure that was brought to your attention so that you have the right information for good fiscal choices.
Okay. Well, we, we've also made a request overall for all salaries to be set at, um, twenty-three with whatever longevity increases that they would get, um, so that we could have a base because the twenty-three amounts as we listened to earlier is not a match. So we were looking for the twenty-four to at least start there and then we can do considerations above and beyond that.
So that one won't show that. And then community correction, so this one is unique, um, in that, uh, if you'll remember last year, there must have been a, a two hundred thousand dollar deficit from one of their grant funds. So they came to the council this year to ask for that to be appropriated so it can be corrected. And Holly and Marika were in doing the paperwork, what they learned was when they come before the council and they don't have the correct amounts from DOC, for example, the ledger is put in as that. And then when they got the DOC money, the ledgers weren't changed to reflect the amounts they actually got from the DOC. So they continued to spin those amounts in prior years, which led to the deficit of two hundred thousand. So Holly and Marika, uh, met in our office and updated the two thousand twenty-three, which we'll have to take care of at a different meeting, um, with different plus appropriations and negative appropriations. But you will see that, um, and there actually was one more correction today that is not on here. Um, but you will see those amounts updated on these forms, except there was one error on four nine oh nine, five nine oh and nine one oh seven, five eight four, that they gave me today. Um, and I think what it did though was doesn't change the overall amount so much as one person was stated as this position when they should be the other position. So you will see, um, one seventy-nine updated. And then what they did, the, the first time that we met, uh, for budgets, they were going to do all of their lit public safety poll raises out of lit public safety for the one seventy-nine account. They have since changed that. So you're gonna see lit changed as a, as a reason for that, but that's why it says this equals base play less, base pay less fifteen percent of the salary for each of those departments on one seventy-nine. Um, what you'll notice on the second one, nine one oh seven, five eight four, is the DOC is giving them a total of six hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars. So now that they know that, they've put it towards the salaries and then what they had left over was two thousand dollars in office supplies, but a, a very understated amount under employees' group health insurance. So this is going to be grossly under budgeted, um, from the DOC. So they will need more money throughout the year to offset the DOC. If I'm not mistaken, and I see that they are both on Zoom, if you have any questions.
When you say understated by about how much?
You'd have to ask her that, I'm not sure, but if I look at, well, let me look at what we said originally, nine one oh seven. Originally, they had, um, when they came before us in July, they had eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-one. And I don't know if that encompassed everything they needed, but they have, it's lessened by two hundred and ten thousand dollars based on that number alone. So something to keep in mind as we go forward.
I'm gonna ask Marika on, um, mute and then, uh, be able to answer a question or two if you would be so kind.
I am so kind.
Thank you. Do you have a number of what the employees' group health insurance should be? Or what the actual number is? Okay.
No, I do not.
That's okay. I just,
Did a projected amount when we did the eight hundred and X amount of dollars.
Okay. Um, and is there a, is there a reason why, I mean, two hundred and ten thousand dollars from year to year is very significant? I mean, that's twenty, literally tw- close to twenty-five percent. So is there a reason why, um, the, the big reduction?
Well, it's not necessarily there was a reduction. What happens is when you all do the budget hearings, we were turning in a projected amount. And this has gone on for years, a projected amount of what we would like to have or what we asked DOC for. So we would turn that into the county. Then DOC would kick back after budget hearings and say, this is actually the amount of money we're giving you. And then that amount was never given back to the auditor's office to balance out. So if, historically, that's just how it's been done.
If I can interject, I will tell you what they originally asked for, for, let me look at five eighty-four, I'm sorry, that's five ninety. I was gonna tell you the amount they asked for in July, but now I'm not there, sorry.
Okay. One second.
Five eighty-four.
One, one second, please. Is my understanding that there's a problem with the alcohol feed?
I just reset the signal.
Thank you. Okay.
The amount requested in June or the amount projected in July when we met was a hundred and forty thousand. And the amount that's on this new amount based on their correct budget is forty-six thousand. So if the original amount was correct, a difference of almost a hundred thousand just in group health insurance.
Uh, I'm, I'm gonna have to ask you just for a moment to repeat that because, um, you said, you said a number that doesn't even match what I'm looking at. The forty-six thousand was the employees' group in health insurance, right? That's what you were referring to.
But if you look at the one they brought in July, so she had commented that what they asked for was projected. What they originally asked for in July was a hundred and forty thousand dollars. If that is a correct amount, then the amount that they received is about a hundred thousand dollar difference.
Okay. Now I, being, seeing the two pages.
Thank you. I would assume so.
I can multitask so many times, but, okay. Um, thank you very much from Marika, uh, for, so we have the answer there that we may be on the hook for close to a hundred thousand dollars. Okay? Anything else?
The next one beyond that, if you don't have any more questions for community corrections, was just the health department that we did not have the health first Indiana budget at that time.
Well, we have two issues, the health first Indiana. And then we also have the fact that we are supposed to, in order to get the health first Indiana, have, giving them, um, the average of the last three years. And that is more than what we have on the budget. So we need to have that, we, we need that to be re- refigured out as well.
Jason might be able to weigh in on that a little bit.
Jason, um, could you just give us a, a, just a brief comment on the average, the three-year average and what we had spotted during our meeting? Uh, I, I know with somebody else that spotted it and, but I'm putting you on the spot, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I can, I'll look, I can look that up while you're talking, but I don't have that here, pardon me.
Okay, appreciate that. Well, what we did notice was, as we've said a couple of times this evening, that we may, we need to revisit their regular budget for the re- health department because we're supposed to give them and the average of the last three years. And we have been able to cut for the past three years, so somehow we're,
Oh, you're talking about the levy though, that's what Jason talked about.
Yeah.
So not the budget. Yeah.
Okay.
Not these numbers anyway.
Okay.
Totally different.
That was it? We're good?
Um, health department, no, we're not good. Superior Court number four had a change, which is the last blue from the back. And when we sent this through payroll, we noticed that there was a step increase that they needed to count, account for. So you will see that now listed on the update.
Okay.
And then on adult probation, what you will see are all of the changes that were requested by council at the last meeting. So some things were moved from, uh, the grant to opioid restricted to be budgeted. Some things were removed from a grant to lit public safety. And you'll notice those changes. Except lit public safety may not be there, that may be on the, the backside when we update.
So one of the things, just to share with the public, is that the Problem Solving Court is looking to be able to fund over eighty thousand dollars of their expenses, um, from the opioid funds that we receive from the restricted funds, which allows for very specific use. And so that would be coming out of the Superior Court for budget and moved over to the opioid of a, a savings from the levy of, of eighty thousand dollars. Correct? Okay?
And then the next thing on the list is lit public safety, which, um, is a longer list, but, uh, just that there's a lot of things in there. You'll have to decide if you're going to fund or not. Um, some of it, I see, well, just, there's some things there, you'll decide if you need to fund or not, basically. The ones with question marks, um, still need to be considered. I have some that I did not include on there from EMS, but they are on EMS's original budget. So once you decide on EMS's budget, you'll know if you're gonna have some of those pulled out of lit or not. Um, and really that's all, I cleaned up some of the ones, I remember there was one from the sheriff that I had understated, there was one that I had overstated. So you'll see those corrections, um, so lit public safety should include much of what has been talked about being on it or what appro- additional appropriations have been requested by those departments.
Anticipated revenue for public safety lit, what is that supposed to be in twenty twenty-four? I know we don't have hard numbers yet from DLGF, but what's our best guess?
The estimated for lit public safety, best guess is eight million. Like eight point oh two maybe without looking it up.
So there's about one point two million that's not presently committed in this budget?
If you use the budget that's there, yes.
But we, and EMS and other things to add to it.
Yeah.
And then the last thing on my list was lit economic development and the reason why, oh, actually, that's not the last thing on the list. The next thing on my list is lit, lit economic development. And the reason why I included that one is, um, it was for the two hundred and twenty thousand for the economic development budget that has been done in the past to a fund. Um, and it looks like it was budgeted last year as well for them to use. You'll have to decide if you want to do that because I know you had issues with wanting to do half of it and then do the other half in July. Uh, you can do that with an additional appropriation if you so choose, um, otherwise, so you'll have to decide if it's included on the budget or not. And the last thing on the list is regional planner. When I was going through all of the budgets, I noticed that there was one, um, I didn't know anything about it because it wasn't, Um, I didn't know anything about it because it wasn't a department, but it's for NERPC. Um, and we have been budgeting in the past years ninety-five thousand for that. Uh, it is running out of money, so it needed to be added to the tax levy act- after looking at it. But it looks like we pay out an amount that's specified by the state around seventy-nine, seventy-five thousand. So you can do with that what you wish, but uh ninety-five is what it was budgeted in the past.
Statute obligates us to pay a per capita amount for uh our contribution to NERPC.
And that is the end of the lists.
So if we've been paying seventy-nine thousand, why would we have any size?
The reason is probably because um when you put in your requested levy, that's not always what you end up collecting. So if we estimate high for our levies across the board, DLGF will then cut some of them and reduce them because you're not allowed to grow your levy beyond a certain point. So when we guess high, the result is some get cut. And my guess is that they probably were just guessing high at ninety-five, hoping that at the end you would end up with seventy-five or seventy-eight to cover all of the expenses for that.
And then what it looks like is according to the levy, I'm assuming that the uh, the fund ended up with a lot in it, so they took the levy away from that one and the cemetery, which the cemetery would be running out of funds as well and needs to be added back to the levy. Um, so that's another change you'll see when um SEH does our budget.
And just in a, like a, a warning disclosure here, NERPC is trying to find ways to increase their, their revenues. Uh, that per capita amount has been the same for about thirty years now. We all know inflation has grown up considerably in the last thirty years, let alone the last couple of years. So um at some point, they're seeking some sort of increase from the counties in, in the form of their contribution. So just so you're all aware.
Randy. Randy, if you wouldn't mind helping me out on this one, I'd like to go back to the lit economic development. It seems to me that in twenty twenty-three was the first time that we ever put the two hundred and twenty thousand dollars into that budget. Before, we just appropriated the funds from there. Is, am I correct? Or did I miss that in the part?
Ten, at the beginning of the year and one ten halfway through the year. It was always, it was always the two, two hundred and twenty thousand.
Yeah, but she's saying that we're putting it in as a budget item now, so it wouldn't have to come to us.
Well.
As a council.
Only if you choose to do that. It was done last year, though, is what I had said. You choose what you want for the budget.
Maybe there's a way, I guess we'd have to talk to guys, see if there's a way for them to, they, they still need to come back for us. We can still stay. You leave the two twenty in there, but just tell them that they gotta come back for every s- it's six months to give us an update. To see if we're gonna, you know.
That's fine. Thank you.
To give us a progress report. So I, I must say that, you know, things were, things were improving, so.
Yes, I understand. Appreciate that. Is there anything any council member would like to discuss before I ask my next question?
I got a question. I see there's some sheriff's department people here and um I don't know, did we ever find out anything about the um LTC category that we're going to look into, seeing if we could separate that or change that or do something with that?
We found when talking with
White, Merwin and Shealy.
Uh, Wagoner and Shealy touching our salary. Um.
Job classification.
Grids, job classification grids is go for it.
The, the issue is that you, it's difficult to pull certain individual employees out of the job classification system without kind of defeating the whole purpose of it. If you pull out a bunch of different categories of, of employees, then, you know, instead of just having pole, PAT, LTC, et cetera, now you have even more that you're creating. Kind of defeats the purpose and it's hard to give an additional stipend to some employees without um giving it to everybody who has that classification. Um, they did, they didn't, honestly, Wagner and Shealy didn't really give us a solution to this one because there, there just isn't one without breaking the job classification system.
Correct. It, it's almost impossible to create a never level to everything without doing it, so.
We, we did find that a lot of the lower levels aren't being even used, so in some, in many departments, so. Um, we also have to figure out what's gonna happen with the future of the job evaluation committee because um business has not been taken care of, so therefore we are not able to consider any, any increases from them. Uh, we requested that there be some training and that didn't happen, so. Um.
And this is where we're kind of stuck. Why I was pushing for training for both the job evaluation committee as well as the council, because there's a lot of a lot of complexities to the job classification system. I mean, it was created many years ago, but the intent behind it is really solid. Um, and Wagner and Shealy can, can answer a lot of those questions. So I'm still hoping we'll get to do the training at some point.
And it could have been done in thirty minutes, so, or an hour. So I'm just disappointed that it didn't happen.
That's the training, though, but that still wouldn't solve the problem with.
No, it doesn't solve the other problem, but it would help every, more people understand it.
Okay, well, I know um I have a problem understanding it too because uh, I don't know. I mean, I'm pretty close to the sheriff's department, as you well know, and I know the responsibility that those four people out there have as mechanics supersedes with technology nowadays. Every, every other mechanic, and I'm not saying anything bad about the, the other mechanics that we have, they're all got big responsibilities. But those four have the biggest responsibilities, especially when it comes to the patrol vehicles and the ambulances and um and I know for a fact they don't let them go out the door unless they're tip-top shape when they come in for service, so. Uh, I just would like to see something uh rectified there if at all possible.
I'm happy to send you all of the documents that I got from Wagner and Shealy, so you can take a look at them and feel free to give me a call and I can talk through some of it with you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Oh, one other thing too, and I don't know, maybe the sheriff's here to talk about it, but uh I know there was specialty pay that didn't go through last year. Is that going to be?
We were putting it in, we were putting it, hoping to put it into the budget. That was one of the changes that she was alluding to that may not have been on the packet.
Okay.
Yeah. But yes, we're looking to put in the incentive pay back into the program because it was left out um in error and, and that was part, you know, um in the excitement of, of trying to give them the pay that we, give them the pay rate that they needed to be able to become fully staffed again and competitive and actually, you know, we have a, an excellent workforce, so um I think we got a lot of positive for what we did. And so that was just one of the, one of the minor errors that occurred.
Okay.
And, and for the, for everybody in the public, we're talking seventy-eight thousand dollars roughly. And seventy-eight thousand dollars is nothing when you take a look at their entire budget, so. Uh, it's, it's just to allow people to get the training and to be paid for the training that they receive and encourage them to do that. And that's done in, you know, other, it's done best there and others can learn from it.
Right, with specialty groups, right, such as the K nine and the, yeah. Um, I know that's been needed for many, many years, so I'd sure like to see that get accomplished.
I don't know, you comment?
No comment.
Do you have any comments now or?
I was just gonna s- point out if there's anyone that has questions about the email I sent or, or what's going on with Baker Tilly. Um, just that we do have um Jason here to answer questions in case you had any. So just that the opportunity is available right now.
And, and Jason, we'll make sure we can distribute any information that comes to us before the next meeting as well, so that will make that easier for everybody as well. We'll share that. Because the, the information that was shared last week was shared with everybody. Earl, do you have any comments or? Okay.
I would like to um, at a point at which you'd be comfortable, make a point that I think needs to be made now to give background about the general fund.
Uh. I'm not so sure we want to discuss tonight, but give me a moment to get through the regular other council members first, please. Randy, is there any comments that you have at this time?
No.
Okay. Uh, my next question is, I, I know that we've been tracking what the total revenue is and that we've also been, our expected revenue for twenty twenty-four. And we've also been tracking what we've been approving for expenses. And it's my understanding that so far to date, we've approved more in expenses than we have in expected.
That's correct.
Revenue. That's a problem. So this is where we lead into another discussion. Uh, just give me a moment here. So typically, uh, in order to spend more, we have to find it somewhere or create another income. And um, we're not about to create any higher income taxes and um uh, we are gonna have to take a, a strong look at what those expenses were and what we can and, and cannot afford. And we haven't had the opportunity to really sit down and do that and there's originally, that was what tonight's meeting was supposed to be for and we're not getting to it. Um, in the past few years, we've been eating away at the general fund, meaning that we've been overspending the past couple of years. And so our projected general fund balance at the end of this year originally was very low. And we've had some income come in this year that may change things. We've had some unexpected income come in. But um I still don't know what the final numbers will be, and I know there's still a little bit more work to be done because that was part of the discussion that we had last Friday, uh, where we were looking at items and we need, one of the things that we needed to know is what the payroll is gonna cost us for the rest of the year at the time. So that, um, I'm not sure what you really want to talk about the general fund at this point.
Well, I just wanted to give a, a small bit of background that will, I think will help the council and not, because I know we've been having uh, kind of collectively understand this. Um, I would just point out that in twenty twenty-two, um, we collected one point seven million dollars of, of new money from uh the, the levy growth. But we roughly um uh allocated or increased salaries to the degree of two million dollars. So that would mean that any additional appropriations from the general fund during that year would draw on, draw down the cash balance. Also three hundred thousand dollars, the difference between the one point seven and the two. Um, so, and then last year, if you just look at the ten percent raises and ignore the fifteen percent for community corrections or twenty-five percent for the sheriff, ten percent eats up three point eight million. And we only got one point nine million in new money. Now, some of that was allocated to public safety lit. But my point that I'm simply trying to make is that a structural deficit was created. You don't make it up. You keep draining cash until the new money you get from the state catches you up to what you're paying people. So the, the long and short of it is the recommendation of my offices or the conclusion of my office, as a respectful recommendation to the council, is that raises cannot be realistically funded through the general fund without offsetting budget cuts. Um, and, you know, there's other places you can look, obviously. Um, public safety lit would be one area potentially and funding more of the public safety budget. Um, the public safety salaries to public safety lit and delaying capital expenditures for public safety as needed. Um, so that's all I wanted to say.
To give context on the structural deficit of the general fund, and this is only looking at the general fund, there's many other funds, but uh, starting in twenty twenty, it had a one point nine five million dollar deficit. In twenty twenty-one, a nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollar deficit. In twenty twenty-two, a four point six seven million dollar deficit.
You're talking net cash flow.
Net cash flow, yes. So each of those years, the ending cash balance of the general fund gradually got smaller to the point that it started this year with four point seven million dollars in it. Um, and if the seventeen eighty-two report is to be believed, we would end this year with a hundred and ten thousand dollars in the general fund. Now, since then, things have changed. Those numbers are outdated. Um, there are new uh things that we receded in, uh, a settlement check, some, some money that we hadn't previously realized was in, in the account that hadn't been logged into the county's financial system. Uh, these various things increased cash by three million dollars. But taking away from that, we also have um the fact that the ten percent raises weren't programmed into the budget. And so because those aren't in there, that's shifting it in the other direction. So it's difficult for us to know exactly what the anticipated end cash balance is. But it's critical that we have some sort of end cash balance, otherwise we don't have that money to call on next year as part of our budget. So, which would mean that then next year we can't run a deficit budget. And it's worth underscoring that the DLGF will not let us certify a budget that can't be funded. So if there isn't money to do it, if there aren't anticipated revenues or cash reserves, they will reduce our budgeted amount until it meets what we can actually handle. So we don't want to be in that situation.
And for the record, each one percent increase in, in pay will eat up of, will consume four hundred fifty thousand dollars is the calculation.
That includes benefits?
Yes.
And matching, I mean, for a matching.
Out the door. Yes.
Baker Tilly's current uh projection for net cash flow, and there's still a lot of things that need to be added into this, as I'm sure Jason would agree. Uh, as of today, is a negative two point two million dollar deficit in the twenty twenty-four budget.
Well, that's a new number since Friday.
Oh, that was in.
It was on there on Friday. Sorry.
Two point two.
Is it, that's twenty-four. Is that what you said?
Two point two.
Okay, I thought you said it for the sheriff. Sorry. With no other business to conduct, I may call for, ask for somebody to call for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
I will. Motion in a second.
Not a motion adjourn.
No, okay.
Continue.
It's a continuation. Thank you, sir.
Correct my process, motion to continue.
So we're gonna, so we're gonna recess to the next meeting. Which will be October second, five thirty.